Good. Go back and call our meeting to order if we could stand for the.
Council of Capola.
Here.
Council Foster.
Here.
Mayor Kozinski.
Here.
Council of Peonesa.
Here.
Council of Islo.
Here.
Oh, hi, Donna. Okay. Council of Rosso. And Council of Veach.
Here.
Mayor, you have form.
Okay. I think that's right. Right. On topic here. Set it up. Just one topic. I think it's the easiest way to do this is. While I'm trying to explain how to do it, because member be.
Sure.
Approve this agenda at the previous meetings on the requests and there's some. I think they will appoint stats. Go ahead, ask me then I'll begin up turning the last question. So again, I'll have Mr. Durski introduce the item and this team is available to answer questions.
Yes. Okay, so um. On the call, Emery Baylin, our bond counsel and Brian Kirsch are on. We go to counsel with respect to real estate matters. They're going to be providing some. Answers to questions you might have on this project. Reason for the money will be bond finance portion of this and performance financing moving forward. Also, Rob Capalletti, hopefully. This is iPhone there, but I'm not sure. He's on vacation right now in North Carolina, so he's going to. From there. So, as you guys know, we have the funding. The money is in process and should land on the thirty. Tuesday. The Wells Fargo Statutory Trust is set to closing for Tuesday. So the closing instructions have done out, the funding instructions have been out and the money is in the process of being transferred over to. Our PTC, which will basically coordinate. The whole process of the bond. And the money outflows from that bond into the construction portion of it. As we've gone through this process, there's been a couple of issues. Not really issues, but concerns that have arisen. Number one has to do with the reverter. And there's been some back and forth on the reverter and the bonds due to the reverter. As of today, we analyze the proposed language of the reverter. And we feel that language is acceptable to us. It's not going to jeopardize funding, so. The bonds legitimately would be impossible to go off before Tuesday, so I think. At this point, the reverter language is acceptable to us moving forward. The other issue had to do with the transfer. To a third party entity at some point in the future. So I want to be crystal clear as I can be. We are talking here today about the thirty four million dollars, so it's essentially a bond sale. The housing authorities issuing the bond. Wells Fargo Statutory Trust is purchasing the bond. That purchase, we're getting thirty four million dollars to build this project. At the end of whatever period of time it takes us to build this project. We will look at permanent finance. We're currently structuring this deal as a lonely from housing tax credit. But that doesn't necessarily mean that that's the direction from the financing is going to take place. Three or four years from now. You're also looking at energy tax credits that have been passed in the inflation reduction of twenty twenty two. But. The regulations for those are still being promulgated, so we don't even know. How that's going to work, but you know, our preference right now. The conceptual preference is to go with the energy tax credit. Because you're going to be able to get sixty percent in the listing. On. Various components of our instruction. So that's a much. Better outcome for permanent finance than low housing tax credits. That being said. Low income housing tax credits require certain structures. And part of that is creating a limited liability partnership. With a tax credit investor and, you know. And there's a lot of unanswered questions as to how that's going to look down the road. Because we're still. Three to four years out from putting that deal together. So having a restriction. On transferring interests from the housing authority. Other pardons in terms of, you know, the title is going to be problematic for us. On a long term basis, so we would request. That restriction be lifted and, you know. You have my word here today that, you know, the property is going to be senior allocating and it's going to be. Some only funded there. It's not going to be anything around, so. It's going to be a third party LST, so basically, Brolin Affordable Housing, so back up a little bit. So. Brolin Housing Authority has been on hold title to property. We are, we have already created a five oh one C three. With the. Corporation, for lack of a better term. That is called Brolin Affordable Housing. Right? That is the wholly owned subsidiary of the housing. We had to do that in order to position ourselves to get down to low income housing tax credits. Moving forward, Brolin Affordable Housing Inc. will probably have to. Set up an LOP or a limited liability partnership. With a tax credit investor. That tax credit investor gets to be identified. We don't know who it is. We have made requests or proposals on that.
And with that, maybe not happen to.
It may not happen. So, you know, it all depends. You're asking me to make, yeah, an outline of something that's going to occur three years.
But what does that do to the project if you can't get that? With the fact that anyway?
Nothing, because the other issue here is we have thirty four million dollars in the bond. So we might not even. If the interest rate environment is. That it, what do you find? Is attracted to maintain the bond, we can maintain the bond. We don't have the permanent finance. So there's no prepayment penalty on the bond, so it allows us an opportunity to finance, want to, and pay it down. Or any other number of options years down the road. So our biggest concern here is that restriction. That kind of handicaps us moving forward in terms of the permanent finance. And just to give you an idea, like the low income housing tax credit would add fourteen million dollars to pay down. So. And that's a guess on today's numbers. We'll see what, you know, three years from now looks like, but. And again, these things, these are moving targets for us because the regulations change, the amounts change, the funding sources change, so. I really can't sit here today and tell you what this project is going to look like in terms of finance, finance structure in three years.
So I have a question. What happens if for some unknown reason? We can't get. Somebody to talk to. We can't do the new thought in three to four years. Because you grab the money and get a bond. So nothing will happen.
Yes, this is a, this is a fifteen year bonds.
How many years? Thirteen?
Yeah. It's structured to pay out a certain amount of. Interest in principle after three years, interest only for three years. Part of that financing is controlling payment, so we'll have that money sort of side. Here, don't consider it in rents. You know, the monies, you know, there isn't was there any? Well, it's not just rents. There's also subsidies, other things. It's not just for the rents. Like I said, if we can do the section eight project voucher assistance aspect of it, they'll generate a significant amount of cash.
So the section eight. With that, about.
So it's like, it's like Marjorie Moore, for example, you know, basically. We can cover from zero to sixty percent. It's actually zero to thirty percent of the unit. You know, so if somebody can not afford to pay anything, they can come in and the federal government will give us a check for. Market rate of that unit, which is five hundred thousand. Under section eight, under section eight. So, you know, we're. Correct. Yeah, I mean, we have the pro forma. I submitted it to the council. So you guys can work with the pro forma, but it's all. It's all laid out how this does. Remember, you can't look at thirty four million because. Thirty four million is going to get paid down. Right? So if you're doing the math on thirty four million, that's. As we move forward, we're going to be getting other sources of funding as well. Brand money, CIF funding. There's other sources of funds out there that we're going to be pursuing. So at the end of the day. The bonded amount is going to be significantly lower than the thirty four million. And that's where the one some housing tax credit comes in, you pay. That amount down as well. For the quarter amount. So on the pro forma, you'll see what. Ongoing, you know. Bond service will be your best service.
So market rate on a section eight is roughly twelve hundred?
Well, that's where we're getting to Marjorie Moore, and these are going to be more. We do, so just so you know, the way the section eight process works is you make application. We have to get a, we have to get a market study done, so. Ira contractor will come in and assess the rental rates of the market per square foot. And that's that relation will be applied to the street contest. But.
And that section eight is going to be.
It's going to be different based upon, you know, the model, the income model we put together. So it's going to be, the state's looking at diversified income approach to. Renting out these properties, so they don't want everybody from a certain part of the graphic. They want. From zero to sixty percent, so we're going to have to figure out how many units are allocated to each level of rental income, I think. Yes. It's based on that very unique.
Money generation become for profit preparation, the one we need profit now.
So number one. The funding source is required of the speed. Nonprofit way is all set up. You have covenants that are going to be part of the land records. They're going to require this to be senior housing, this major construction, the site plan. So, you know, and additionally, the zoning specifically clearly states that this development opportunity is only afforded to the old house.
And you're saying, so I wanted to be called. Taxable property.
It's taxable property the minute we get it.
It is.
It is. I pay taxes. I pay about thirty eight thousand dollars worth of taxes, you know, in two complexes.
We have the ordinance for going by new progress.
We are not, we don't fall under nonprofit, that there, yeah. So we pay, we have a pilot agreement and I'll be in front of you again for corporation at some point in time, so corporation governs. How tax.
Five oh one C three, that that is not, that's.
All affordable houses will be five. We've been owning property. The town, the Brolin Housing Authority is going to own the title to the property. You're going to profoundly step over to Brolin Affordable Housing. Then the order we can. You're making for nonprofit. Okay, I was not aware of this. Yes.
Yeah, Brolin Affordable is a five one secret. Mr. Sinister, Mr. Denopria, what say you on this?
The fact that it's a five oh one C three. Does not determine whether there's an exemption available under the applicable statute. There's specific uses of the property. So Joe's right. I mean, it's not tax exempt. From a real estate tax perspective. Five oh one C three or not, that's, that's. Got nothing to do with twelve eighty one, which is the statute under which an exemption would be claimed from real estate.
I remember passing the common ordinance. When the developer wanted to burn Marlin Hill into a private school. We gave them not one property tax status. And I thought it was quite a lot of nonprofit.
That's, that's an educational use. There's a specific exemption in the statute. We won that case. Marlin. Remember, they closed the school, so. We denied their exemption and we got summary judgment in that case a couple of years ago, but. The basis of their exemption claim was the educational, if it's used solely and exclusively. For educational purposes, there's an exemption availability. And the reason we won the case is because they closed the school during COVID and never reopened it, so how can you have a school without kids?
I. I believe you're absolutely correct about the state statute. I'm recalling the common ordinance. May not apply. The ordinance was passed. If they were going to sell it to someone else and they're going to use it for that purpose. But as a school, it would not be taxed because the nonprofit I work with, they're looking at leasing the building. And if they lease the building in town, the owner would have to pay property that way.
So as Attorney Denopria stated. The use. In the regulation, we governs whether it qualifies for that or not. Our retention use, I don't believe does. I'm not well versed, but I concur with the other attorneys.
I did probably remember that, yeah, I think you're absolutely correct about the state statute. I don't think you're going to worry about.
Yeah, I've not seen that ordinance, so I can't speak to it internationally, too, like federal law.
It says that if we get section eight housing, then it falls under HUD. Would that change anything regarding the age restriction at all?
No. So again, this is. They still. HUD does not care about age restrictions. It's the state of Connecticut. Do you understand there's not any restriction? The state of Connecticut, do you understand? Okay, so there are funding programs of both through. Do you have have penalties if there's nature restrictions? Right? Which essentially makes the viability of getting funded impossible, right? Because everything you do is on a scoring basis, so you get certain points for each component. And then if you age restricted, they take away ten points, so effectively preventing getting, because there are going to be seventy points qualified for funding. So HUD is a separate animal. HUD is a federal agency. They do not have any, as yet, restrictions on senior housing. They provide affordable housing for section eight project vouchers for anybody. And, you know. Again, some of the restrictions are, you have to offer, you know, we can't restrict just to Brolin residents because it's federal money. It has to be open to the federal state. But that's the same. Yeah. So.
That's only with the, with the section eight.
Now, that's true. Basically, any money is of course from the federal government to the state.
The way we have it set up right now, with the thirty four million that we get from Wells Fargo, no one else is involved between the town and the housing authority. We could say Brolin residents, Brolin seniors get first preference?
No.
We can't even say that, man. You can't say that.
The difference between seniors and residents, you can't, you can't exclude anything. Anything that's not common resident.
Correct.
Yeah. You can, you can exclude on age. Provided that you treat everybody equally in that.
So how will the process work? Now, the kids coming in.
So again.
And the last thing I would say, and no offense, but every one of those units being, though, I need somebody else in a different community.
So this is the situation. We have.
I'm sorry, but.
We have.
That's why we're doing this.
We gotta, you gotta be respectful of fair housing law.
I understand. I understand.
Certain comments made that way could open up illegal action. The violation of our housing law. But that being said. You have to look at. Our process. So our process right now is, we open up the waiting list. An application may, we look at the background, what the current comes. They qualify to respect in one of those units, they get placed underway. Right? And again, that would be sixty five and over for the sale. That's the L really cut off. This new complex is going to be fifty five and over, which is the senior cut off. Right? And that, this ability does not fall into this because we're not getting funded.
Sixty five and older and not fifty five?
Fifty five and over for senior housing, sixty five and over for elderly. Our two complexes are sixty five and over. Our new complex is going to be. Fifty five and nine.
Why, why, why?
It provides a small opportunity to get, you know. People in, in those parts, so there's a demand. In that age group, that allows us to open it up to them. You know, they're technically seniors. There's, there's people that are retired in that age, they're inherited, widows, you know, what they're dying or staying, they're going to really go. Yes.
Way over that, but.
No, yeah, so the way, the way it's going to work in terms of all paying tenants is, we currently have an internal transfer list between the two properties. I think so. Those people get first dibs. If they refuse those units, then it goes to our waiting list and our waiting lists, when, you know. We go through our waiting lists and go back and deposit, and then we open it up to the.
How many do we have in the two minutes that we currently?
We have seven units right now. The waiting list would be two right now. Now, that fluctuates from month to month.
So seventy units between Marjorie Moore and personal rights.
Correct.
That's the average age. Seventy. So with all the people there, they qualify, you have the population. If it happens.
Yeah. So they get.
We're not, so this is the thing, we're going to get a larger amount of people in their fifties, right, coming in there. But there are people, because I get the calls, where we have widows, where we have people that have lost their jobs at hard times. That need some housing options, and right now, with the sixty five and over, I cannot. Afford them a housing option, whereas this will allow us to provide something in the event that that kind of situation arises. And, you know, again, when you have a widow. Or a widow, you know, their income is down, they're not, you know, they're not, may not be in a position to be able to afford a market rate unit, so this will give us some flexibility in terms of.
Yeah, you know, people.
Yeah.
So you're making that, well, it's about nothing to do with finance.
No. Well, it's the age restriction of the. The planning zoning condition. Senior, yes, senior housing, so the definition is going to change into sixty five and up. We visit, we would, but. Yeah, no, I, yeah.
I don't think there's going to be a lack of people looking for house, you know, so. My question is, if this is really trying to help our seniors, then maybe we should consider sixty five and over. As opposed to fifty five, because I don't think there's going to be a problem.
Where's the change that have to be signed this agreement is.
Can we do that?
Well.
Mister, Mister Jeff, so. Let's say we're not comfortable with the fifty five and what we put in our planning and zoning. Decision if we went to revisit that, made it sixty five and over, is that too late?
Well, keep in mind that what's happening right now is the housing authority is exercising an option. That was granted to them. And so everything flows from that. Modified and restated and extended option agreement.
Right.
So, you know, the idea behind the age restriction in the option agreement was always the town council's idea. You know, and you're in a special meeting tonight, so you can't amend. The agenda to add an amendment to the option agreement to change over sixty five, but. If that's something you wanted to do down the road and the housing authority is agreeable to it, then. Go for it.
Yeah, that's what I mean. Down the road, not now. No, I know we can't do that.
Yeah, I mean, the housing authority can work cooperatively with you if.
Yeah.
If you're, if you're both in agreement that that's the direction you want the development to go.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know what that does to the census or any of the. Financial projections. I don't know that it makes a difference, to be honest with you, because it's a small development.
Yes. No, I, yeah, I, I know, I, we get it, but we're not sure about it. But it, it, it's an option if we wanted to sue that. Okay. So I have a question on the reverter clause. Jeff, could you explain what the, what the, so if. You know, this goes through on, you get all your financing, everything's good on. July eleventh. And. Three years from now, there's not a shovel in the ground? What, what, what are we looking at now for the agreement? I thought the reverter clause got changed. I know we talked about the bond on which we built, what do we do upon? What's the?
Concern, the concern that the council had.
Yes.
That caused the housing authority. Whether it was in May or April, I can't keep track anymore, but.
It was earlier than that, I believe.
Yeah, so the housing authority had proposed. The reverter to give the town council peace of mind. So that you didn't. Worry about a scenario where you're giving. The property for nothing to the housing authority and nothing gets built on it. So the idea behind the reverter. Was to come up with some structure that a lender would be comfortable with. To protect the town. And address the town council's concern. So the way that this. Deed is currently drafted. The reverter is tied to the completion of the project, which is defined as a permanent. Unconditional certificate of occupancy. Right? So. If the certificate of occupancy isn't issued. Basically, four years from now, July thirty one, twenty twenty seven. Then the reverter kicks in unless. Prior to or at the time that the building permit is pulled. The housing authority replaces the reverter either with a bond. Or a cash payment, in either event. Equal to the fair market value of the property as established by. Town of Brolin assessor's field card. So the reverter. Is there to protect you from giving away land that never gets developed. And the same way of accomplishing that. Terms of the protection is by paying you the fair market value of the land. So that's the alternatives that we came up with. That would work for a lender. And those are reflected in that. Final version of the deed that you have in front of you tonight.
So Jeff, so the reverter at, at that date in twenty twenty seven. Unless, so that's the date we're looking at for the, the complete. Completion of the project, the last CL was issued, right?
Right, I mean, keep in mind, there's a significant environmental scope that has to be completed.
Yeah.
So let's say the environmental takes eighteen months and construction takes eighteen months. That's three years right there.
I don't know if the environmental scope is that.
I, I segment, I thought we heard representations that the shovel in the ground is happening in November this year.
Well, so. My, my understanding is most of the asbestos and. Contaminants, let's say, on the site is pretty much like a couple of months worth of project. And tearing down the building is going to take like a day and you can start. Going from there. I mean, this is what, what's been.
So if we're looking at the shovel in the ground going in a lot earlier. Four years seems to be a long time to wait to see if the whole thing's done. Why wouldn't we go to three years?
So my question is.
Yeah.
Why the reverter? Because we have the money and I'm just trying to understand.
Why?
No, I'm trying to understand. In what? In where we don't complete the building, how that, how that function, already have environmental assessments performed.
That's another term that they use on Wall Street, the black swan that swim, swims in out of nowhere and.
Well, I'm trying to see what the black swan.
The black swan is that, for whatever reason, Joe, I don't know, I mean, because there, I don't. But no, let me, no, let me, no, so the, the black swan is that. Nothing gets done for a year or two or three. I don't, I don't know. I mean, the town is out, what are we going to do? You own the property. We have to, we have a fiduciary duty as the elected official of the law to protect that property, right? We can't give it to you.
I have a fiduciary duty.
What if it's five years, you don't get it done?
I borrowed the thirty four million.
No, that's great, but it's sitting there. Somebody has scones with the money? A million things could happen that we would never see it coming. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying you're doing it. I'm just saying that who, who knows what occurs, but. If it doesn't get started, I mean, we're talking shovel in the ground. In November, December, maybe let's go March, March next year. What's it take to build these units? A year, maybe eight years? That seems like a long time to build fifty two units, but that's a snail's pace, I guess.
Yeah, and I'm looking at the black swan events, you know.
Well, yeah, and I'm looking at new toward development, see how fast their book up starts, so, you know, I'm just, I'm not. I'm concerned that four years is a long time to say, well, we're not done yet, you know. You know, we didn't even start yet or we're halfway done in four years, that would be a lose-lose for everybody.
Well, my, my idea is to get this thing built.
Of course, no, I agree, but we have no guarantees.
The reverter, the reverter is proposed, that's sitting on the table right now, expires upon the completion of the project, so.
Right.
As much as I hate to have a reverter, this one doesn't really hurt us at this point in time, so.
But what, what protection do we have, so Jeff, if I understand this right, maybe I have a law, but. The reverter ends when it's completed in four years, right, it's not completed.
Again, again, the reverter. Can be replaced with a bond or a cash payment when the building permit is pulled, okay?
But who, who, who is gonna make that decision, us, the council?
No, no, it's the House Authority's option.
Well, that's their option, so they don't wanna do that, let's say, when they pull the building from there, they don't wanna. Give us a performance bond and they don't wanna pay us capture of the property, three years from now. All right, they don't wanna do it, now they're just, well, let's say they pull the building for three years from now, and they don't wanna, so. They have a year to build it, I mean, it's not gonna be done, so we have to wait the four years for it to revert back to the town, no matter what, unless they decide. To, to put the performance bond up when they build, they pull the building, pull the building permit or pay us the cash back.
Correct.
So we have to wait four year, what if not one thing happens in four years, we're sitting here waiting and we have no recourse, is that the way it sits now?
That's the way, that's the way it sits, yeah.
That's not a good way to sit. I'm sorry, on behalf of the town, that's a bad way to sit. I, I don't know, you know, I thought, I thought. I, I know the lender doesn't like reverter, I get there, I certainly get the lender side of it, but I gotta look at the town side.
The town side is, you're getting fifty-one units, so.
No, I'm talking about if it doesn't happen, Joe, I'm not talking about if we get it, if we get it, we get it, I, that's wonderful, that's what we all want. But.
So we have thirty-four million dollars in the bank.
Well, not yet, no, you need to close, Jeff.
Well, we need to close, yeah, yeah, but.
I get that, but.
So.
There's no, there is no protection for the town whatsoever, other than a lawsuit, I guess, which we don't wanna go through that.
So you torpedo the project to save the town, is what you're saying.
You know, the town's a greater interest than one project, I hate to say that, all the taxpayers are, you know. We owe a duty to the whole town, not just.
I fully understand that, and.
Just go around that level playing field, that's crap.
I put a lot of time and effort into this project.
I've been there with, but I know that, we all have.
I have.
Including voting for it.
The fact, the fact of sitting here discussing not completing this project, now they have thirty-four million dollars is quite serious.
Well, 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 wait, wait, so, so. I wanna say this was approved by planning and zoning. Been here eight years since the mayor, knowing that.
Ten years ago.
Ten years ago?
Mm-hmm.
Do we have a project?
No.
No, well, that's what scares me, and as it should any, any reasonable person, and. Who is sharing?
Do we need to go through the history of why?
I know the history, I know, other, other, wait, 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 let me finish, other than the two years, we had trouble with the state, but the easement, that nobody found, shame on everybody, but always fall. After that, you know how many iterations we've gone through to get this thing going, many, 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 so. That's ten years, there's not a shovel in the ground, the Knights of Columbus is not knocked down, nothing. I'm not saying we haven't worked to get it, don't get me wrong, I'm not saying we haven't worked to do it, but it hasn't been done.
Mm-hmm.
So what's to preclude us from another ten years, that's great to get the thirty-four million in the bank, that's wonderful, we'll see what happens on the eleventh, but. I don't know what happens after that, there's no, we have no recourse, if three years from now, you still don't have a shovel in the ground, don't you?
The pound is risking you for that land for four years, we have responsibility to that, but we're all over risking. It's. He gets the thirty-four million dollars and goes to the Bahamas, right, they go south, right? Right, your town.
All right, number one.
Can't use the land for four years, that's over risky, you're not giving the land away, you still get the land. Right, he's just got a four-year window.
Another four years, the votes the way for the senior.
If we don't go with this.
Well, there are other developers that would develop, this will do it, that one doesn't, but I'm not saying, just.
Hold on, hold on, you know what, I gotta say this, because you have a responsibility flying around town here that you have, nor, or whatever that group is, that's working downtown. Trying to get this site, okay?
Wait, before you go there, there's another rumor floating around town, which is not a rumor, that in the last Berlin Housing Authority meeting you had about last week, was it? You blame the town for this project not happening.
Yeah, because we're sitting here, like, this was supposed to.
Joe, there's no way you're blaming on, you're not, you are not blaming this sir on the town, I'm sorry, Joe. You know how many times I've been in meetings with you, remember we had the deal with the, the other consultant, that didn't go, this didn't go.
I'm sitting here, three years away from having a thirty-four million dollar deposit into a bank account. So I can start this project.
Yeah.
And we're sitting here, what if?
We've been what, I've been in for ten years. And you're right, we're finally here ten years later. And I, I hope it happens, but I, I can't. Trust that after what has occurred in ten years. I, without, knowing the town's protected, I gotta wait four years to get our property.
You have a reverter clause.
It's four years from now. That's an eternity, so it'll be fourteen years if nothing gets done? I mean, it just keeps getting stretched further.
I don't know what to tell you.
I don't either.
I have thirty-four million dollars sitting here and you're gonna torpedo this.
No, let's not go down that road, because you already did that in public, over in, in your Housing Authority meeting, I don't appreciate that happening, people call me up saying, hey, you guys are torpedoing the project? I didn't care.
What do you call this? What do you call this?
I call it protecting the town.
How? You have, you have a reverter clause, the property doesn't get, it reverts back to the town.
Four years from now. After ten years, we waited ten years to even start, hopefully we start.
The chart prohibits.
Yeah.
This property from being developed for senior housing, without the role of the Berlin Housing. Okay?
Yeah.
So no developer is gonna come in and develop this.
So when you think the shovel's going in the ground on this project, I'm, when, when, when do we think the shovel's going in the ground?
If I can get the closing on Tuesday.
Yeah.
Then we will be. Marshaling the environmental guys in there the next day to start their phase two assessment.
You have a contract with them?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's been waiting.
Is there a contractor that's gonna build this whole building?
Yes.
Building? They're waiting.
Everybody's waiting. We have Manafort Brothers is on the hook right now to go demolish this building once the phase two is completed, yeah. All right, I'm not interested in bragging this out for four years, I wanna get this thing built.
I, I, I could go, I can only go on past performance, I'm sorry, that's all I can, I'm sorry, that's all I can go on, I can't go on the future, I don't know, I wish I knew the future. I wish it was done, you know, ten years ago, but here we are, we wish that away, Joe, we're with you, I know some of the problems we both have, I get that. But it's make, it makes me nervous, because we've been to this brink before and. You know, we never got there, now are we there, I hope we are, but I still, I'm gonna wait another four years?
That's the reverter.
I get that, that's.
There's something with my construction.
Let's make it three and we got a deal.
Marie?
Yeah.
What are your thoughts?
Yes. Well, well. I can just say that. Um, I can speak to the low-income housing tax credit. Portion, which you've already said is worth about twelve million dollars. Um, that is the federal government's way of, of allowing low-income housing to be developed, because everyone knows that. The cost of construction cannot be. Cannot, y, 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 you can't, you can't pay the cost of construction with just the rents that are charged in low-income housing. So, so they have lots of requirements in order to get the tax credits, we will have to apply to C H F A. Um, that has to happen in the middle of construction while we're doing construction. Um, that process. Will take. They'll do a marketing study, they'll do an appraisal, that process can take anywhere from six months to a year. Um, so we've talked, Joe and I have talked about immediately going, starting that process with C H F A. Um, there's federal requirements, the requirements are that you transfer to this, um. Uh, a limited liability company, liability partnership. Um, the equity investor is, is a partner in that, um. It just takes a while to get through that, now I don't feel that. Four years is outrageous to get everything done, to get the construction done, to get the second permanent financing in place. I'd be a little concerned with three years, I mean, what if we're halfway through the process, then what happens, does that mean that you take back the property? Um, and somebody else finishes the pro, the, you know, I, 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 I don't understand, and. We don't know who the equity investor is gonna be, if we're going to get an equity investor to do this. Freddie Mac, Fannie Mae. That, you know, there's insurance requirements, there's, there's all kinds of things that, you know, we're gonna start working on, but it takes a while. That doesn't mean that we can't be building, we are gonna be building, because we now. I, I talked today to Wells Fargo, they were putting together, I sent them the wire instructions. They were putting together the final closing documents, they're all set to close this on Tuesday, now, I can't say it's. You know, with certainty, because I don't say that until I see the money in the bank account. But I've worked with U S Bank, U S Bank is going to, um. They will hold the bond, the bond will be deposited in depository trust company. Um, there's, there's investors that, that Wells Fargo has lined up, so that's all set to go, um. The U S Bank will be, you know, every time Joe makes a payment. Um, he, you know, needs money, he'll have to give, he'll have to give, uh, receipts. Um. You know, to, to U S Bank in order to draw down that money, so that money can only be used for the project. Um. I, it just takes, it, it takes a while. You know, three years, I mean, I really, I don't understand. The difference for the town for three to four, I can see if nothing at all has happened, but. We're gonna get the environmental study done. You know, next week, if we get the closing done on Tuesday, so, um.
The only thing I would add to that is, is just that, you know, once you start putting shovels in the ground, you always have to. Anticipate for the, the unforeseeable circumstances. And contingencies that you may encounter, you know, you, you may start remediating the land or the building. And run across unforeseen circumstances that require additional. Contracting or additional work that wasn't previously anticipated, so. While the project could theoretically be done in the three years, you need a potential cushion. Just in case something unforeseen does arise, so that you're not running into. The town's reverter kicking in while you're still actively diligently pursuing completion of the project.
Oh, well, there's that unforeseen stuff, again, I get it, but one's on one side, not the other, but, but so. Unforeseen, so we're at four years now, the project's half-done, so revert back to the town, we're stuck with a half-built building, is that what we get? Do I understand that correctly?
There is a construction bond on the project.
There's gonna be.
There's gonna be, yeah.
You're gonna pull it out.
That's part of the requirements.
When you pull the permit, right?
Yes. So, I mean, like you said, I do not see a negative here, calling positives thinking, but. You know.
Tried to be, Joe, we tried, we've all tried. You have to, I, I'm not saying that.
I've been pushing this, if it wasn't for me, this project wouldn't be here today, right?
Yes.
Uh, we, we. Yes.
Don't forget that.
Yes, I, the, the council meeting.
No, remember the D E P stuff we had to work on.
Yes, yeah, there was a lot of, a lot of work.
It was a team effort.
So, in that team effort vein.
Yes.
We need to close this deal today and we need to get authorization to close on Tuesday, so I can get my guys in there on Wednesday and start doing the.
So the day you pull the building, building permit, there's a, you gotta have the performance bond. All right?
Yes.
Okay. That's not true, I don't believe, correct, Mister?
The construction.
Well, we're talking about two different things.
Right, that's what I'm afraid of, yes.
Performance, the performance bond is, is issued by a surety. On behalf of the contractor. For Berlin Housing Authority or whoever enters into a contract with the contractor to ensure the performance of the work.
Right.
Okay, that's not the bond that we're talking about for the benefit of the town, the bond we're talking about. For the benefit of the town is for the determined. Fair market value, which is defined as the assessor's field card, fair market value as of the date that the building permit is, is pulled. That's a different, that's a different type of bond, that's for the benefit. Of the town in the event that the project is completed by that July thirty-one, twenty twenty-seven date.
And we will, we only pull that if the reverter, if we want the reverter to go. Right, but at this point, the reversion language is acceptable to us, and we spent the last week negotiating.
No, I, I understand, we've got it, yes. Construction is covered by the bond by the contractor, I get that, so if we come to. Four years next, the, you know, July in twenty twenty-seven, right, and the buildings have finished, obviously we have the bond by the contractor. That we finish the building, if we don't finish it.
You are not gonna have a field of vacant basements, but staring everybody in the face, so this building.
And the property would revert. To the town, at that point, we've got all the final C O.
Yes.
All right, Mister Dampier, that's correct.
Well, it would, it, it. Legally, legally, that's correct, whether practically, that would make any sense would depend upon a whole.
Circumstances.
A whole set of circumstances, you know, who's the contractor, are they performing, what does the lender wanna see happen?
Right, right.
You know, I mean, there's, when you have a distressed project.
Right.
There's a whole bunch of meetings that take place to figure out how to get the project completed.
I, I understand that, but, but legally speaking, that's how we agree.
Yes. If the town wanted to avail itself of that option, that option would exist unless the bond or the cash were tendered when the permits pulled.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes. I would also add, at that point, you know, seventy-five percent complete, there's, you know, is there value for the town to stake or? Relax, then, then we just say, okay, we need a few more months, get it done and just. Get people in there and.
I would hope so.
Yes, but that was the way we might proceed. I can't win the option, that gets what the protection is for the town. But, you know, like Jake said, there's, there's all of the common sense approach, what's the value in doing that? Good for the owner, you know, how they build, building and.
Right.
No, you're just looking for a C O in three years, four years. I think the only thing.
No, listen, I get, but I, you know, again, if it's a fence around the dumpster pad, I would hope.
Take the four years as well as the reasonable fine. I think for these, so these contracts, you just collect the contract with the left guy.
Uh, pretty much, yeah, but it depends again. These things, there was a brownfield grant that period building done and. Uh, there was a brownfield grant, but we declined the brownfield grant, there was a bit of that another year on the project, and it's. The cost of remediation is such that it's not worth it here, it was, so. I know there's been some discussion about nineteen-month window for the remediation. We already have a phase one done on the site. There's mold, there is asbestos and the mastic around the windows. There's some asbestos vinyl tiles in the basement portion of that property. Um, and there is fuel oil, I believe, on the site, and all of it is pretty much resident inside the building, so. Remediation is not going to be a time-consuming process. The cinder block building with a couple of meetings on it, demolition, you know, if I wanted to, I could demolish it in an hour with bulldozer, but. I'd probably kill myself doing so, so, you know, maybe it'll take two days as opposed to one day, but, you know, Manafort, this is gonna be a. Easy peasy type operation. Once we build it down, then there's site work involved and stuff like that, we got a great thing, but, you know, basically, my guys are. Waiting to go and get this thing going, I'm hoping to do the demolition work concurrently with. The site plan repressures and the special permit approval, so that. You know, we have both come to an end with the same time. Structure, and during that timeframe, our contractor will be able to get ramped up. In terms of ordering supplies, getting contractors lined up, so that they can commit a circular foundation work, utility work. And, you know, hopefully, you know. If things work perfectly. Hopefully, we pour about the poor concrete in the summer and, you know, start framing and. You know, after the winter.
Business network?
Yeah, then things work perfectly.
So I answered your question, you mentioned that, uh, the contractors of your choice and your, uh. But if you involve HUD, do you not have to be prevailing wages or?
No, because the funding source is not HUD.
Okay, so you don't have to.
This, yeah, HUD has nothing to do with it, so you have to look at the funding source, where the money comes from as to what's.
Maybe. Putting HUD and.
HUD would be a section eight and that's down the road, there's nothing to do with this current. HUD would be a section eight, and that's down the road. There's nothing to do with this current process. So the current process is the thirty four million dollars bill and goal. And that money is coming into a non-governmental entity, so we're not necessarily tied to any. Uh, prevailing wages, making wagerings.
Okay, appreciate that. Peter, I know you've had some trouble getting on, Donna, Casey, any, uh, I know, Peter, you missed a bunch, sorry, but, uh.
Yeah, I, I shouldn't be allowed to have one of these things. Really? But I'm here now, um.
Good.
I'll, I'll try to catch up as we go.
Donna or Casey, any, any, uh?
I'm just, uh, this is Donna. I'm just taking it all in. I think it's a foreign conversation and obviously, you know, ongoing and. And evolving in terms of, you know, what, what to do next.
Casey, anything? No. Okay. So.
I think my, and I don't know if there's a way to. And I don't know. I know you said as long as you're here, it's gonna be senior, and I know. That's what planning and zoning said, but I also know that state is coming into some other areas and said, doesn't matter, it's transit or anyone, we're gonna go X number of units on this lot. I'm concerned that if we go and we get some kind of funding from the state, whether it be grant or loan or, you know. I'm just concerned that they're gonna then come in and say, well, it's no longer senior house. So I'm not sure if there are any kind of protections that. We as the town can have for the seniors per se, you know, by saying, okay, you know what, if if. Once the bond is up and you need to get loans, that's fine, but it can't be through. Certain agencies or something, because I'm concerned about it getting converted, you know, away from seniors, so. I'm trying to find if there's any protections we as a town can put in there.
There are deed restrictions that Jeff has put into the the deed from the town to the housing authority that requires the property. To be used as affordable housing for senior housing. Uh, for tenants with incomes at or below sixty percent of the area median income for a period of forty years. From the date of the issuance of the building permit.
Low income senior citizens.
Correct.
And and in addition, if you go, if you go with the low income housing tax credit, CHFA. Uh, will put a fifteen to thirty year covenant on the, on the property that it can only be used for low and moderate income seniors. Um, we as, as tax council, when they issue the bonds, the new bonds to pay off the. You know, the existing loan will also be putting a land use restriction for as long as those bonds are outstanding. So there's lots of protections here.
The state legislature can't do anything to our deed restriction.
Yeah, I guess. Donna won't let that happen. Fine, alright, what do we got? Any else? Any other questions, concerns, uh? So the reverter wants to say they're not exchanging as 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 written, according to the agreement that we have read over before today, and, you know. It's just the one time coming, Joe, we know that, we know.
Trust me, I assure your frustration.
Yes, I know you. I know you're all very frustrated, and we just wanna get the best for the town and for our seniors. That's what it's all about. We all are happy, believe me, despite our discussion tonight, if we sound unhappy or whatever, we're very happy to get to this point.
It's politics, yeah, it's like.
Yeah, it's a long time coming, and, and, you know, we've got a lot of roadblocks from, from all sides. No, I know, yeah.
Isn't that my time and money?
Um, yeah.
At this point, if this was not a go, I would say it's not a go, but it's a go. I mean, the thirty four million is sitting there. Yeah, it's a transit, so. I would like to basically let it get there and start spending it.
Yes, we'd like you to start spending it as soon as it gets there as soon as possible.
Tuesday at the council, maybe.
Yeah, that's right. We will know by that. Yes, now, if that day, if it doesn't close, I I understand, but. If it doesn't close on the eleventh, I'm gonna be really nervous, okay? That's really gonna be a bad omen for the whole thing.
Can we get a progress report and then move forward with this project?
I mean, you know, there's gonna be, you know. No, there's gonna be a lot of interaction between the town and the housing. Until this thing is turnkey and operating, because we gotta go through planning results, yeah. We have to do public hearings. We have, we have to do a cooperation agreement. Because the last one was done eighty four, and we're operating on tenants of that one. We should get that, huh? We should probably upgrade it to current fair housing laws. You know, so there's, there's issues that are gonna arise, so you will, and you will get briefed on a regular basis, so.
Okay. What, go ahead. Second on this? Second to that. Any other discussion, comments, anything? Alright, so, uh, all else aside. Donna, Casey, or or I?
Yes, I.
I, okay, great, uh. Thank you. Any opposed? Alright, motion carries.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Joe. Bulldozer start tomorrow, Joe, come on. We're all on the same boat with this. We all feel the same way. We want it done. I'm glad it finally got passed, thank you. Thank you. Everybody, I know. Thanks, you, Roche, everybody, everybody pitched in on this. I know it's been a very, very long road, but. That's, we hope we're there. Thank you, Joe, and I know it's gonna be difficult for everybody.
We're frustrated.
Yes, it is very frustrating, yeah. You gotta go, Jeff?
Yeah, I got another meeting. I'm late.
Alright, thank you, Jeff.
Don't forget to move to adjourn.
Yes, we're gonna do that next. Alright. Motion to adjourn, yes. So, alright, cross that.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, everyone. Thank you, everybody.
Take care.